Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Hobler.
Here.
Len Monahan.
Here.
Kate Messiallo, I'm here. Carrie Phillips.
Here.
Jeffrey Stone.
Here.
Susan Swartz.
Here.
Danice Wilson. Danice, are you on?
Sorry, here.
Okay, and Albert, too? Okay, all present and accounted for. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering if we could start this morning's meeting, given this extraordinary unprecedented situation that we're in, by having a moment of silence for those two Erie County residents who have lost their lives to this most brutal virus that we're all experiencing. So I wonder if we could have a moment of silence? Okay, thank you. I also want to begin today by just expressing on behalf of the board our thanks to the entire executive staff, Dan, right down to every administrative officer of the college, our faculty, our students, everyone who's made this difficult journey that we're on, who's made it possible to keep this college functioning, to keep the classes going, teaching the children online, teaching the students online, facilitating all the different administrative activities we've had to do to facilitate this continuation of our operation. So speaking on behalf of the board, we're just very thankful and appreciative of all the efforts that everybody has made. And we wanted to acknowledge that right up front before we started today's meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll begin by reading the mission statement. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programming committed to student success. Thank you. So now, as the agenda notes that we're going to have a presentation by Drescher and Malecki, is that still on?
Yeah, this is Matt Montalvo from Drescher and Malecki.
Yes, Matt, thank you.
Great, great. So I did this presentation to the Budget and Audit Committee a few weeks back. And I'm not sure, I hope everyone has either access to the PowerPoint, because that's kind of what I'm going to be going through. If not, I'll try to just hit on the major points. Just so, I think the main objective was to really, you know, capture, you know, how the audit went and also look at the financial trends of the college and communicate that with the board.
Can I interrupt for a moment, please?
Yes.
Are we going out of order with the agenda by taking this position out? Isn't this supposed to come in during committee briefings?
We had it on the agenda, Kate, as
Yes.
as the first item before the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Matt, continue.
Okay. So I'll go through that communication with the board.
I'm sorry, before you continue, Matt, I'm sorry. Is there anyone who can send us a copy of that PowerPoint by email as he's going through?
For the board, I am working on getting this shared out through the WebEx.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, I think in the meantime, I can go through just a couple of the main communications before I get into the graphs and trends, which would be helpful to have up. But, you know, so essentially, we went through the audit results for the year ended August 31st, 2019, external audit with the Budget and Audit Committee. We communicated our required auditor communications. And I think the most important piece of that was to clarify what our responsibility is versus management. And, you know, really, that management of the college is responsible for the books and the records. And our role or our responsibility as external third parties is to come in and provide an opinion on the financial statement. That opinion is, do the financial statements fairly represent the college's financial position and results of operation? We do plan on moving forward with what's referred to as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. So, you know, that's really the most important piece of the document. We performed our audit and concluded that the financial statements fairly represent the college's financial position and results of operation. So it can be relied upon in making decisions on the board level as well as by outside third parties. So, you know, that's obviously the primary communication to the Audit Committee. What we do beyond that is go through some of the trends and financial highlights. So that's really what the PowerPoint focuses on. Is there a way to scroll through this? Can you move down to the next one? Perfect, right there on page two. So this is the, essentially, the operations trend, revenues, simply revenues versus expenses of the college. We're going to focus on three lines here. The first one being the red line, and that is reports your expenses for the last five years based on the financial statements. So because the financial statements of the college requires the college to also include within that expense the impacts of projecting out future liabilities, that red line has always, you know, or I shouldn't say always, but for the last four years, has been quite a bit above the blue line, which is your revenues or your inputs. Now, the reason we also provide a third, kind of that dotted gray line, that takes out the impacts of those long-term liability projections. And it provides more of a kind of a budget expense, more of what your true operations trend and cash flows are. So we compare, what I want to focus is comparing that dotted gray line with the blue line. So I think what jumps out to me is the last two fiscal years, the gray line has moved above the blue line. So our budgeted expenses are outweighing our revenues. And again, focusing on the blue line, the revenues, you can see from 2015 to 2019, it's almost a flat, if not declining, trend. So, you know, I think that mirrors the enrollment declines over that period. But certainly, when you're looking at a budget that you're anticipating to go up every year, that becomes difficulty from a sustainability standpoint.
Matt, excuse me, Jeff Stone here. If anyone can't see the PowerPoint, I think Matt's referring to the chart that we find in our materials on page 60, hard copy materials.
Yep. Yeah, so, I mean, I think, again, from our perspective, that revenue line is I know everybody is aware of the enrollment challenges. That is probably the most concerning because you know, from operating any entity or any business, it's very difficult to control expenses, especially when they're tied to, you know, whether it be union contracts or, you know, contractual arrangements that need to provide these salaries and benefits. You know, it's very tough to control that. So the revenue side being at a flat level or even declining makes it increasingly difficult. Then can we skip down Then, can we skip down to the next slide? Slide three. I don't know who's controlling the...
Is this the page you want?
No, if you could move to the next one.
There you go. So, that's page 64 in your hard copy package.
Okay, one back. We can go to the cash.
Cash position.
63.
There we go.
Yep. So, I think when you consider those impacts for the last two years, you know, the biggest impact being the net change from 18 to 19 with enrollment, and we saw that gap between the expenses and the revenues, the result was an impact on your cash balances. So, this is the five-year trends of your cash position. You know, certainly, you've made investments over that time, whether it be in a new ERP system or capital projects. So, you know, those cash balances, I'm not saying it has to be at the 2015 level, but I think the biggest, you know, I guess, red flag is looking from 18 to 19, where, you know, you lost over $7 million in cash, down to just about $31 million in 2019. And then, if you go to the next slide, it kind of all ties together with cash, and I want to introduce this concept of fund balance as well, because fund balance, when we look at the financial statements, because of governmental accounting standards, it requires you to project the financials on this ultimate net position amount or equity amount that includes, again, those long-term liabilities that aren't due, you know, in your next year's budget. Those are the ones that you pay as you go, be it your pension liabilities and your retiree health insurance benefits that you pay out. So, when you look at the financial statements, it gives you an unrestricted net position, and it reports it almost at, you know, a deficit of $200 million in 2019, the first number. Now, that's not, you know, you're not $200 million in the hole. You saw you have, you know, $30 million in cash, and you have other assets, and your short-term liabilities, you know, aren't above that amount. So, when you look at what your true fund balance or, you know, your liquid net position, we have to adjust for those impacts, and that is really kind of the number that you operate your budget on. So, the unrestricted fund balance is at that $15 million at the end of 19, compared to 18.47 million at the end of 18.
Right.
The reason this is important, because this is how you consider your budget going forward, and, in fact, you adopted a fund balance policy, you know, over the last year to kind of establish what you want that amount to be. So, the fund balance policy was established at two months of operating expenses, or about 16.67% of your budget. That $15 million represents about 13.6%. So, you're below that level that you really want to be at for your operations. You know, you're not quite at the danger level, but, you know, as you can see the trends, it's kind of moving, you know, to a direction where I think there, you know, you need to start looking at those actions. And, I know that these are, you're talking to Jeff and some of the other board members, I know that these are conversations that you're having, that this isn't, you know, a surprise to anyone. But I think from my responsibility from the audit to communicate these trends was important. And then, you know, really, the last piece is our final observations. You know, from, again, from an audit standpoint, the primary goal is to issue an opinion on the financial statement. So, they do fairly represent, in our opinion, the results of operations, the financial position of the college. That's the best you can do from an audit standpoint. From a internal control standpoint, you know, we do issue a formal management letter. There were no material weaknesses in internal controls that we were report. We did talk a lot about the changes in the new accounting software, the operating system, as well as kind of the transitioning of staff in finance and accounting. So, you know, the main recommendation was to kind of tie that all together, once everything is, you know, kind of settled with the new system and the new staffing, to, you know, formalize your policies procedures under that new system. But, again, from, I think, the primary communication today is really looking at those trends and where your current fund balance is.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Jeff, anything?
I know. I'll make further comments when the Budget and Audit Committee report is made.
Okay, good. Obviously, we're going to be dealing with the SUNY budget and whole array of financial considerations in the upcoming month or in two. So, if there's not any other questions, we can move on.
Well, thanks, everyone, for your time. Hope everyone stays safe.
You as well.
And Matt, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Take care.
Appreciate your presentation. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have four items for approval this morning. Are there any questions? You know, what is the board minutes? We got a couple fee for services, an agreement between the bills, at the training center. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not...
I have a question.
Kate, go ahead.
I have a question on the agreement with the bills. I mean, this is for sessions that are April through May 15th. Is it likely that we are going to even have these sessions? So, I'm questioning the reason why we would go forward with this when it's likely that it's not going to take place due to the COVID-19 crisis.
Yeah, I was wondering the same. There is no fee associated with the Cape.
So, this is just putting in place the ability if we're able to move forward?
Utilize those parking lots if we can do it. But I suppose as well, they would be canceled. I don't know if anyone has made that decision yet, but we don't have financial exposure through this.
Okay, thank you.
Did I virtually be recognized? Oh, yeah. Katie, in Penny's office, has been in touch with the bills in terms of that very issue, and verbally, they've said, yeah, we can wipe out the dates and just make this agreement in principle for some time in 2020.
Fabulous, thank you.
Okay, so, we all set on that? Then, on 10 motion, now, on the motion, I need the person who makes the motion to identify themselves, the person who seconds it, to please identify themselves, and then, we'll have to call the roll, unless there's a more expeditions way to do it. But Bob has alerted me to the fact that in order to stay in compliance with SUNY regulations, we have to be very specific on how we're doing here.
This is Danese. I'll second the motion.
I'll move it. I don't know if we had a motion to move. This is Kate.
So, Kate, you moved it, and then he seconded it, or is it the other way around?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, okay. Motion's been made. It's been seconded. Kate, do you want to call the roll?
Sure. Todd Hobler?
Approved.
Len, Lenahan?
Yes.
I will approve as well. Carrie Phillips? Carrie, are you on mute?
Yes, sorry, I muted myself. I'll...
Jeffrey Stone?
Approve the consent agenda motion.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Danese Wilson?
Approve.
Albert, too?
Approved.
So, the consent agenda is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. We will now move on to committee meetings, committee briefings. We'll start with Budget and Audit. Jeff Stone?
Good morning, all. There's been quite a lot going on on the Budget and Audit side of things, as all of us are aware. I'm going to report just quickly on the meeting that we had, refer you to some particular pieces of the materials that we have in front of us, and, you know, talk just very briefly in a general sense, because we've all been grappling with the financial issues that Matt identified. But as far as the Budget and Audit actual meeting, we met on Thursday, March 12th in the afternoon. We had two briefings, one from Matt that he just went through with all of us, and we went through that, you know, in quite a lengthy manner, going through the notes and the proposals and the charts and making clear exactly what sort of audit letter we had, i.e. a clean one, as Matt identified. That's good. There was nothing in the letter or the materials. I've reviewed everything in the package, as I did for the Budget and Audit Committee meeting. And while we have issues to deal with that Matt identified and we're all familiar with, we don't have red flags and bombs in the financial statements by way of difficulties, for example, that the auditors are having with the staff or anything like that, that would cause them to question the procedures under which the financials were prepared and presented. So, that was good. We met again, again, on Thursday, the 12th. We've also had some additional briefings with senior executive staff going through the year-to-date, budget-to-actual projections, beginning to talk about next year's budget. There's been a lot going on outside the formal meeting of the Budget and Audit Committee, and many of us, again, are familiar with that. One recent one occurred on Monday, March 16th. At this March 12th meeting of the Budget Committee, we also had a presentation on the Foundation's audit, and that was from a different accounting firm. And again, that was fine in terms of the letter that came. The only difference is, and I don't know if Mike or anyone from the Foundation is present at the meeting, I'd like to just bring up one thing. Is Mike there or someone from the Foundation? Chris?
I'm here.
Okay. I just would like to draw the attention to, in our materials, page 27, and this came from the Scrobaz and Company firm. There were some deficiencies that they noted, none of which struck me as, you know, significant, serious, or really concerning. But they, a couple of them, several of them, had been mentioned in prior audits and were mentioned again in this audit. So, I just wanted to draw the board's attention to page 27 and 28 of our materials, and take a look at those and ask if, Mike, I don't know, you're probably not prepared to present on exactly what's been happening with those deficiencies, whether there's a plan in place to address them. But I think we would like to have, in a month, just a comment on exactly, I'd like to not have multiple years of deficiencies over there. I realize there's an independent board of directors over there, and it's not our board, but still, as the board of the college, I think if deficiencies have been mentioned once, even minor ones, and more than once especially, we should make sure we have a plan in place to address those. So, I'll stop there in case Mike wants to comment, but that's the only thing that jumped out at me from the other audit that we got, i.e. the Foundation's audit.
If I could jump in, this is Mike. I don't know if Bob can pull that section up, because I think what you're referring to is some of the bookkeeping and accounting.
Yeah, exactly. They were fairly minor, but to some extent, a little repetitive over year to year. So, that's why I just wanted to flag him and see if we can get that cleaned up.
Jeff, just so you understand, we had a little bit of staff transition over those last two years, and in the past year, we, I thought we addressed this at the meeting, so I apologize if it wasn't clear or if I didn't state it perfectly. But those processes sort of, in some cases, fell off because we had transitions from staff, if you recall. At one point, we had Ernie Keel trying to help us out with the books, as he transitioned to a new job in Penny's office. In the last year, Chris's responsibilities were changed and altered, and we also brought on a part-time bookkeeper that we're probably using seven hours a month. And those two fixes have brought our reconciliations and everything else up to speed. So, I thought we could mention this at that meeting, but we feel we're in a better position, and we won't be falling behind on reconciliations in the future.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we had some plan in place, and again, it may have come up on the 12th. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
This is Kate. I just want to also point out the in-kind donation deficiency, particularly since the board is no longer, our board is no longer reviewing and approving in-kind donations. So, we want to make sure that your, that the Foundation Board's policies for, you know, obtaining an appraisal and just valuation is all in place. So, if you could present that next month, what those procedures are, I'd appreciate it.
And then, we moved on to the Foundation's report on its goals and metrics. I think we're familiar with that from seeing that in our materials each month. And I think as a board, we're trying to add as much concreteness to those goals and metrics as we can, and the Foundation's been very responsive in terms of that. So, some of the things, obviously, that are in the works and plan to try to meet those goals and metrics are somewhat derailed right now because of the virus, just the last two weeks, that's happened. So, but other things have already taken place, and our materials have information on that further back in the package. It's on, the goals and metrics are discussed on page 53 of our material. And you can see, we're trying to make sure that there's some concrete movement in those areas as best one can do. So, page 53 in that general area of our materials is what I'm talking about. So, we did go over those in some length, and had a good report on those that has since been hurt, of course, by the virus.
Can I jump in again, please?
Yeah, Kate, go ahead.
This is Kate. I'm looking at page 63, too, and we're talking about establishing a multi-year financial plan. I just wonder when that's due. I mean, these metrics, Goal Eight, which says add several new scholarships since 2019, I mean, metrics need numbers. And, you know, become a minimally supported asset of the college within five years, Goal 10, I mean, when did this start? What is within five years? I think we need to really put down numbers so that we can measure and we know what we're measuring.
It goes to the concreteness point that we've talked about several meetings. So, the more those can continue to be refined, put some meat on those bones, I think there'll be a more useful tool for people at the Foundation and for us. We did review the donor report, which I would consider fairly routine. That's in our materials. We continue to get donations. That's great. And then, we move on to the presentation on the SUNY Erie audit that we just heard from Matt. We got perhaps a longer version of it, but he made and emphasized the same points that he just did with us. The budget-to-actual was also discussed, and we have that in our materials as well. And that has been the subject of a tremendous number of discussions as we budget throughout the year. Penny has made regular reports, attempting to budget her expenses to the decreased revenue flow that's entering the college. And we are at the point where we have done all we can, and Penny and the senior staff have done all they can, to continue to cut expenses to meet the declining revenue stream. And at this point, we're really, in my view, at the end of the road on the expense side. You only have so many supplies, equipment, and discretionary things that you can cut. So, the revenue and the enrollment matter is way down. We have materials on that. We're at the end of our expense management side, and unfortunately, we as a board are having to look now at the revenue side. We've had two years without a tuition increase. I think we've heard, and it's no surprise to anyone, that we're going to have to look at that. The extent of the tuition increase is still to be decided, but there is no way we are going to be able to manage the college without increasing revenues. And at this point, the only one that we control is the tuition side of it. So, we're going to have to look at that and see the impact that that has on our notes. Speaking of notes, I wanted to draw everyone's attention to what I consider the most important part of any audit, that is the notes to the financial statements. Now, if my fellow trustees, I mean, we have the budget, people are on the Budget and Audit Committee, but if you're not, and you just want to get a very good handle on what's going on, the notes are really a great place to start with that. The notes to the financials for SUNY Erie are found on pages 97 through 120 of our materials. I would make a note on that for all the trustees who maybe are a bit overwhelmed by 200 pages of financial information. The key pages are 97 through 120, the notes. There's also a section on management discussion and analysis, which is prepared... by, uh, leadership at the college, senior executive staff. I think Penny probably takes the lead on that, but it, a lot of folks weigh in on it. MDNA for the college is found on page 73 through 83. So if you really want to drill down on where you can get the most value in terms of understanding exactly what's going on at the college financially, management's view of that, what are various sources of revenue are, what the expenses entail, uh, the, the key provisions are pages 97 through 120, the notes to the financials, and the MDNA, the management discussion and analysis, page 73 through 83. So I just want to really encourage everyone to take a look at that. There are many things there other than our revenue problems and our enrollment problems. For example, it talks about exactly how we're funded by the state, exactly how we're funded by the county, who owns what assets in the, uh, in the college, uh, in terms of the county basically owning our campuses, how various revenue streams interact to create our financials. So, um, just wanted to point out for everyone where I felt strong attention should be paid within the financials, as well as, of course, to Matt's overall, uh, report here and some of the charts that you'll see on the PowerPoint and that are also found here in the hard, hard copy. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that, with that, I will conclude and just mention that, uh, we're almost operating as the committee of the whole when it comes to budget and audit right now because this is such an overarching situation for the college. But, uh, that is my report from the Budget and Audit Committee itself.
Thanks, Jeff. I believe we do have to approve just the, uh, the disposal of materials.
Can I ask a question? This is Kate. On, um, page 148, when we're talking about the supplier analysis, I see that we are paying taxes to the town of Amherst and taxes to the town of Orchard Park. I thought the college was a tax-exempt organization. I also noticed we are not paying taxes to the city of Buffalo, so I'm curious about that.
Um, so Kate, this is Penny. Um, so we do not get charged taxes by everybody, but there are a few pieces of property we own that we do have to, that the taxes are passed on to us. I ask that question every year, it comes up because I keep forgetting what the answer is because I do think that. But every time we go back, um, they are, it is something that we agreed to or or the county has requested from us for a, a long period of time and we can't, we can't avoid it. So I can go back and have another conversation and see if we can get out of it, but there, there, there's a couple pieces of land we can't avoid paying taxes on. I think they're related to the cell towers or something like that that we get revenue off of.
Okay, you could find that out. I'd appreciate that.
Certainly, I can take care of that.
And just one, one last thing on the, um, facility rentals and waivers. Now, I'm sorry to be taking about this, but I see that, you know, there's a $7,380 fee that was waived for the MAC conference, and it doesn't have a sign-off on who signed off on the waiver or the form that's supposed to be in place. There's forms here from the MAC conference, $7,380 fee.
Okay, I'll look at that one. I thought we had all of the, the waiver forms attached to that that we, okay.
And then there's an opticians fee, you know, $920. Some of these are from October and, and September, and I don't know why we're getting them five months late. Um, but it seems to me that, you know, if, if, if an opticians are having a conference, we could add the cost of our, you know, maintenance and, and the cost and pass it along into their sponsorship. So I, I mean, again, these are small things, but we have to look under every rock for every dollar. So.
We, we do. I will, I will ask Mr. Gass, who's on the call here, to, um, look into those two because those records are coming from his, from his area. So I'll, I'll make sure that those get pulled. We have started, based on your request, we have started including all those waiver fees for you. We are, we are also looking at, um, at where the line is between what we will and won't waive, uh, based on the conversations we've been having in our other meetings, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, um, Jeff, I do believe we.
Hey, Jeff, this is Albert.
I'm sorry?
Hey, London, this is Albert. Sorry for cutting you off. I guess it must be delayed with that, with the phone. Hey, hey, Jeff, good morning.
Good morning, Albert.
Hey, um, uh, yeah, the expansion documents are daunting. I appreciate you, uh, explaining them, but hasn't been decided, I know with the revenue, tuition may have to go up, but hasn't been decided by how much percentage-wise.
Right, right. There's been no decision made even to create, even to create, uh, an increase in tuition, but it's in front of us and we'll, I'm sure, be talking about it. And just from the strict, strictly reporting is my role as Budget and Audit Committee Chairman, uh, it doesn't seem to me that there's any alternative to, to some, uh, increase in tuition, and that will be a decision for the entire board to make once we see, uh, exactly how those numbers play out. But that's just my opinion, and the board hasn't made that decision yet, so I want to make that clear.
Can I, uh, ask a question, Jeff?
Yep.
Um, maybe this is more for Penny. Um, the, uh, economic stimulus package that was passed by the federal government, uh, I thought that I read that there were revenues for, uh, colleges, but, uh, I, I wondered if you might speak to that, uh, if there is anything in either, uh, state or federal legislation that, that may help the college.
Certainly. Um, so these are the conversations we've been having with SUNY over the last couple of weeks. And, um, the, uh, we are submitting weekly to SUNY. We are submitting all the expenses related to, um, our response to COVID, and so they are starting to capture that includes overtime hours as well as direct expenses for supplies and items like that, uh, submitting those to SUNY, who will be submitting them on behalf of the entire SUNY group, all 64 colleges, both the, the system colleges as well as the community colleges. That's something we just got clarified this week. So we aren't going through the county with this, we're going through SUNY with this. Um, there are no promises, there are no guarantees, but they are coordinating the effort to try to be able to access some of those stimulus package dollars to get us reimbursed. I have no idea how long that's gonna take.
So I might add that, um, the presidents have been meeting with the chancellor, and she, she has suggested that, um, we, the college may qualify for FEMA support in the economic stimulus package. Um, and so we, we have been recently given language to, uh, send to our, our federal lawmakers with regards to, uh, the need for community colleges, um, as well. System may actually have some points for, for us, and, um, I know our chancellor is, is going around, um, and speaking with national foundations, uh, to provide relief as well.
It probably goes without saying that there's so much, uh, so many proposals floating around for bailouts, assistance, federal, state intervention, that if it hasn't been established at the college yet, a, a working group of some sort simply to keep track of what we might qualify for will certainly be called for. I know the, the $2 trillion stimulus just passed last night at, I think, 11:57 p.m. in the Senate. It hasn't been approved by the House yet, but it's expected to be. So that's one source, but there's also, as, as Dan mentioned, the FEMA emergency money, uh, state of emergency declaration out of New York. Um, I don't think anything special is coming from the county right now. They're more of a recipient of federal and state dollars, but I do feel like there should, this should be a strong priority at the college to just keep track of what we might and to keep track of what expenses we're incurring so that when the time comes to submit for reimbursement, of course, we're able to document everything. So I'll stop there.
Okay, so Jeff, this is Penny. Um, just to answer that, there is, uh, an emergency ops group that was stood up the, pretty much the day that, um, all of this started going on, two weeks ago. We meet every day at 11 o'clock, uh, and discuss these things. They are tracking the expenses. They've been doing it for six weeks. Well, no, wait, six weeks. It hasn't been six weeks. The two weeks that we've been doing this and sending that to SUNY, they feel like six weeks, but.
Six years.
So they've been, they've been tracking, uh, all of those expenses. Everyone submits them, everyone knows what the rules are. And then SUNY has been, um, coordinating all of, gathering all the ability for us to get refunds and asking us to do it through them so that we're collaborating, pulling all the dollars together because the bigger the dollar amount is that they can give to this group, easier it's going to be for us to get funds back, um, instead of us all hitting them at 64 different institutions trying to get that. I'm coordinating with the county through, uh, Maria White, um, on all of our needs and their needs, and we're doing a lot of collaborative stuff with them to help take care of our community. And then they're also helping, letting us know when there are opportunities for us to get reimbursed for the things related to this as well.
I really like the idea of collaborating it all through SUNY in one big ask, something that federal government can deal with instead of 64 different applications. Excellent approach.
Yeah, so.
Okay, any other questions on the, uh, Budget Audit, uh, report? Um, we do have to approve item, um, the disposal of materials. It is the only item on the agenda for approval. Jeff, would you like us to commence with that?
I'll move that.
Yep.
It's been a motion made by.
Jeff Stone, second.
Trustee by Mazzello, second by trustee Stone. Uh, Kate, would you please call the roll?
Yes, on the issue of disposable, disposal of materials, Todd Hobler.
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Yes.
I approve, too. Secretary Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
I approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approve.
Albert, too?
I approve.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Um, and on my motion, there's items 1217 for board information, and we'll, we'll receive and file those. Um, we'll now move on to policy and governance. Chair Kate Mazzello, I believe you have two items.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, for the board's approval is this board policy on emeritus status. This will establish, uh, benefits and criteria for emeritus status for retired members of SUNY Erie's faculty, their counselors, librarians, administrators, and members of the Board of Trustees. Guidelines and nomination forms are provided as appendices. Does anybody have any questions about this policy?
No.
I just got a quick question, Kate.
Yes.
Was this originating out of the, uh, out of a sense that perhaps there were too many Ameritized, um, designations or, or not? I looked at the list of the emeritus designations. It was actually quite long, some years, especially years ago, less so lately. And I just wonder if anything like that stimulated this or, uh, we were just trying to get a better, clearer policy?
I think we were trying to get a clearer policy, also making sure that, that the, um, emeritus status is updated annually, so, and that's part of the guidelines to make sure that somebody is tracking them, to, um, codify what the benefits are of having emeritus status. And just cleaning up, as we do in the Policy Committee on a regular basis, just looking at our old policies and just, uh, making sure that we're up to date and, um, everything is in one place instead of being scattered, uh, throughout different policies over the years.
So not really an effort to quote-unquote narrow the funnel or anything like that?
No, no. In fact, we expanded it because, um, we included, uh, members of the Board of Trustees in this. So there's one policy for everybody who has been affiliated with SUNY Erie over the years, who's now retired, for whom we want to give special acclaim for their service.
Thank you.
So I would move this, if there are no additional questions, move its acceptance.
Wait here a second.
Second. Susan.
Susan, okay.
Kate, would you call the roll?
Yes, um, on the policy for emeritus status, Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Approve.
I approve. Secretary Carrie Phillips?
I approve.
Jeffrey Stone?
I approve.
Susan Swartz?
I approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approved.
Albert, too?
I approve.
Thank you. Um, so this policy is approved by the board. We appreciate that. Next is, um, the student transfer credit policy, which you can find on page 189 of your packet, which I have to get to. Excuse me. Sorry about that. Um, so this really is just a renaming of this policy. It had been titled the Student Residence Requirement Policy, and given that SUNY Erie now provides students with, um, housing options, we thought it necessary to change the name of this policy from Student Residence Request, uh, Requirement, excuse, excuse me, Student Residence Requirement to the Student Transfer Credit Policy to better, uh, reflect its substance. So this policy really just defines and clarifies, um, what our parameters are for transfer students, the number of credits they need to, um, earn from SUNY Erie before a degree is granted from our institution. Does anybody have questions on that?
No question, at my place.
Then hearing that, I'd like to move this, uh, student transfer credit policy.
Make some, make some motion to approve. Wait here a second.
Susan.
I'll second.
Okay, and I will call the, so we have a second by, um, trustee Stone. So on the student tr- transfer, uh, credit policy, Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
I approve.
And I approve as secretary. Carrie Phillips?
I approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approve.
And Albert, too?
Approve.
Thank you all. Um, so this policy is approved, and we have minutes from our January 10th meeting for the board's information. And can I please, um, just suggest that if you're not, um, speaking, you mute your phone? Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kate. Okay, we will now move to, um, strategic planning and assessment. Todd, is there any report?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, we, uh, had a strategic, uh, planning committee meeting on March 11th, which seemed like, uh, years ago. Um, and, uh, we had a, uh, actually, I thought, a very good discussion of reviewing within the context of Erie Excel's, the kind of key performance indicators, uh, retention, uh, persistence. Um, of course, enrollment has been down, but the other two indicators were, were trending positively until, uh, this crisis. And, uh, uh, and, and we had, uh, a, a really good discussion about, uh, shared governance, uh, in the, in the context of moving the strategic plan. And, uh, I, I would open it up to any of the committee members if they wanted to add anything. Uh, we scheduled our next meeting, uh, for August. Uh, I think the world will be very different by then. Um, and, uh, and the minutes, uh, for our last meeting, uh, are for review and, and we submit to the board.
Okay, any other comments on Todd's report? Not Todd, thanks very much. Um, do we have one item we need to, uh, receive and file? Um, just the minutes from your December meeting, and I'll do that on my own motion. Um, so we'll now move on to curriculum, student success and diversity. Chairs Susan Swartz and Denise Wilson, um, anything you'd like to report?
I would like to have Doug address these two issues, these two opportunities. Doug?
Uh, yeah, with regard to the affiliation agreement with, uh, SUNY Erie, uh, Health Sciences and Rochester Regional Health, this is just, uh, a standard, uh, internship agreement that did not use our template, and that's why it needed to come, uh, in front of the board for information. I believe the other one is just the minutes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
It's a standard agreement, but not on our, our, our standard template.
Okay, we'll just receive, uh, and file those.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, uh, the next is reported the chair. Uh, admittedly, I don't have a whole lot to report. I was in Florida for about a month, just got back. Uh, however, we did conduct a number of, uh, conference calls regarding, uh, the budget and, um, obviously, the coronavirus, uh, situation, particularly with our labs. And, uh, also, we've been engaged with discussions about the libraries, which things seem to be working out there. Um, I guess all, the only thing I want to add is, again, um, as the chair of this board, uh, to, again, just commend everybody for the cooperative spirit, for the collaboration that's gone on to make this, this whole SUNY and Erie, uh, college function, as well as we have. Um, these are stressful, difficult times, but I, I think everybody has risen to the occasion. Um, the communication is, is very, very good. Um, people are meeting their obligations and keeping the students in their, uh, in the forefront and working out, you know, faculty having to learn how to do these online courses and, um, I just think it's been a remarkable, um, few weeks, and we, you know, we're fortunate, um, that we're functioning at a high level and, uh, that everybody's working together. So that's, that's just basically, um, my report. We have had some ad hoc committees, a marketing met in late January. Paula, are you on the call? If not, it was a pretty, you know, the, the meeting we revolved around getting the website up and running. And I think we're having a lot of success there. Things are still being worked out, but the bottom line is that we've updated our website. And, you know, Paula will be keeping us up to date on issues regarding that. Technology, Carrie Phillips, anything to report?
Nothing to report today, Lynn.
Thank you, Carrie. Talent management, Susan Swartz?
I'm wondering if Tracy wants to talk about something, what's going on with the folks there. Tracy, you there?
Is Tracy on the call?
Which one are you looking for?
Cleveland, right, Susan?
Yes, Tracy Cleveland, I'm sorry.
I don't see her on the call unless she's one of the call-in users. And she's normally pretty good about getting, getting
She is on the call, but she's having trouble, it looks like, with her microphone, but she is on the call.
Okay.
Okay, well, we can
Have her cover.
Yeah, we
We can Send something for us.
Okay. Paula Sandy's on the call as well. She's having trouble, it looks like, with her microphone, but she's been on the call as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Okay, we'll move ahead. And if we need to come back at the end to pick up with Tracy or Paula, we can. But why don't we move on to the report of the president, Dan?
Great, thanks, Lynn. Welcome back. So the focus of my report will be COVID-19 and what SUNY Erie is doing to maintain safety while ensuring academic continuity for our students. So, safety first, I hope you are maintaining a six-foot distance from my image on your computer screen or from your phone. So this is a president's report like no other I've had to give. Nothing really prepares you for this. I completed two executive programs in higher ed at Harvard, but I'm guessing I must have slept through the class on pandemics both times. When I was president of Antioch University in CL, we had a series of bomb threats that the FBI notified us, that's credible. We had a mudslide that took out an entire community. We had radioactive fish from Fukushima. In California, we had students that couldn't drive to campus because the roads had been closed by wildfires and, and students who couldn't fly to our campus after 9/11. But all of that pales in comparison to what we're experiencing now. And so this is truly unchartered territory for our SUNY Erie community, higher ed in general, and the country. To be in the state that is the most impacted by COVID-19 with a death rate here that is doubling every three days and a rate of hospitalization greater than anyone projected, as the governor reported yesterday. To be continually adapting to minute-by-minute changes in state executive orders, county directives, and SUNY guidance, to have, to have to convert almost 3,000 instructional sections online after and without staff on campus is something just short of a miracle. So I want to begin by congratulating our college administration, staff and faculty for what they have been able to do in a really short period of time. It's been just two weeks since the proclamation for us to go remote, and it's been all hands on deck 24/7, especially for my cabinet and the COVID-19 task force. The commitment to our college, to the safety and academic success of our students, has been nothing but truly inspirational. It's under circumstances like, like these that we see the real values of our community and witness the resiliency and dedication of our college staff, faculty and administration. So I want to give all of these valiant individuals a moment of recognition and a virtual round of applause for the sacrifice and selflessness during this crisis.
We're all giving you a standing ovation.
Yeah, I, I think I need an applause or something. And I will also disclose that the professionalism of our SUNY staff by individuals whose family members have been affected by COVID-19. I spoke to a staff member yesterday whose elderly father in New York City has been confirmed as having the virus, but she remains here in Buffalo for our students. So certainly our thoughts go out to him and for our SUNY Erie staff member. And with regards to SUNY community college students themselves, there have been positive COVID-19 individuals among them as well. At Corning Community College, Nassau, and Fulton Montgomery so far. But I'm happy to say that thus far, no staff or students at SUNY Erie have been found to be positive for COVID-19. I also want to take a moment to thank our Board of Trustees for your many calls and emails and willingness to conference with us at a moment's notice to help us figure this out. Your forbearance and abiding concern for our students has been abundantly evident and unwavering through all of this. So clearly you've had our students' health and safety, as well as their academic progress, as your number one priority. Our college relies on your prudence, your integrity and your leadership, and you have not failed us. So a virtual round of applause for our board members as well. We, we're also seeing this role a public college plays in state and county operations during a crisis. A couple of days ago, the governor's office called me to see if we could keep our daycare centers open for the public during this time. So we've, we had temporarily closed them as our students are on break, but we want to provide that service for our community, and we're working with the governor's office to do exactly that. Our food services will be providing meals for emergency workers of Erie County, and we are preparing our Flickinger Athletic Center for the non-sick homeless as local homeless shelters are having staffing problems. Our nursing program will be providing ECMC with extra masks and protective equipment, while we are also loaning our ventilators to Buffalo General and Children's Hospital. The governor's office is also asking that we identify healthcare professionals and students. So for instance, EMTs, respiratory therapists, et cetera, that may be able to help. And per their request, we are also providing the dimensions of all our facilities that may be used as a quarantine dormitory or a staging area. So SUNY as a system is also looking at manufacturing many needed materials and equipment, as well as doing vital research in RNA sequencing for the virus to see if and how quickly COVID-19 will mutate. And they're also involved in preliminary clinical trials. So it is, for me, immensely heartening to see the significant role that the college and SUNY Erie are playing in, and will continue to play in this coronavirus crisis. From my daily calls with the SUNY chancellor and a couple of days ago with the governor's office, it's clear that New York State is relying on us at SUNY Erie. And the governor and the chancellor feel a great responsibility to not only the state, but to the nation to get this right. New York State is, as you know, the nation's epicenter for coronavirus, and quite literally, people's lives depend on whether we help the state get this right. And I've been humbled by how the entire SUNY Erie community has risen to the challenge and has made me so proud of our community. And it's been a real honor to serve with all of you at this unprecedented time in the history of the country. So, so thank you. At this point, I'd like to give an overview and more detailed update on what we're doing at the college in response to COVID-19. So we have limited the staff on our campus to essential services such as security for the operations of the college. So for the most part, we've moved to 100% remote operations with very limited staff actually on our campuses. And security is going to provide new badges to employees who have been designated as essential, as well as work on limiting each campus to a single access point, which will ensure that we can control and know who is on campus at any one time. All our classes have been moved to a distance learning format. All face-to-face labs have been suspended. The instructors are working on plans to teach the labs via distance learning if possible. And both SUNY and other agencies are working with state ed to get some flexibility with regard to our labs and clinicals. For instance, the, the use of online simulations. So if the lab absolutely requires hands-on learning, students will be given an incomplete for the remaining work of the semester. And our student service offices have also moved to remote work and are available via email and phone during office hours. Faculty can access our offices if they need technology, for instance, the computer or Wi-Fi, in order to teach their classes remotely. But absolutely no face-to-face instruction is taking place on our campuses at this time. Our libraries, however, are remaining open on limited schedules in order to provide students with access to physical resources like reserved readings, as well as computer labs and Wi-Fi to complete their coursework. So based on an initial survey of our students, we're guessing around 15% to 20% might not have the technology to complete their coursework. So access to our libraries are essential for them. And last week, about 900 students used our libraries, even when the libraries were closed prematurely. So the library hours are currently 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, with extended hours until 7:00 PM, one day a week at each campus. We have also petitioned SUNY for laptops for our students for, so that they can loan them out. And I made a personal request to the chancellor, and she promised me yesterday that SUNY Erie will be at the top of the list for the next shipment of laptops. Our off-campus internships and clinicals are proceeding where possible and at the discretion of the company in which the internship or clinical is, is, is held, obviously. Many companies have sent our students home in light of the governor's state on pause executive order regarding essential services only. So most student services and functional offices are working remotely with phones forwarded to SUNY Erie staff working at home and by email. Academic tutoring is being redesigned to go 100% remote as well. And we are trying to move the deadline to withdraw from classes for this semester only from Friday, April 3rd to Friday, May 1st. And this extension, which includes the April break, would provide an opportunity for students to evaluate their progress in their classes after the mode of instruction changes March 30th. Our dean of students are, our deans of students are working on creating a virtual SUNY Erie experience using social media to keep students engaged outside of academics. And as you know, Paula Sandy, our director of communications, continues to send out nightly emails to the campus community with logistical updates and answers to the most frequently asked questions. And these updates are also shared with our Board of Trustees and the county. And the media has also provided regular updates. So we've established an email account for students to submit questions, and these questions often feed directly into the nightly update. But we're also working on answering every student's email individually. We have also established a webpage linked directly from our homepage containing all communications regarding COVID-19. All enrollment management functional offices are also working remotely with phone being forwarded to the home of employees as well as access by email. And we have redesigned our main phone line. The welcome center of staff is acting as an operator transferring calls to the appropriate departments and logging student concerns to ensure a closed feedback loop. So ask ECC emails are now following the same protocol. Admission staff are handling new inquiries in addition to calling the 1,950 inquiries already in our pipeline. So staff are also following up with students who have incomplete applications and continuing to send communications via workday on a daily basis. Our counseling staff are on standby for students who need assistance adjusting to the new circumstances. They are also helping their caseloads of students on probation via Starfish. So the SUNY system is also looking to expand a program called Reenroll to Complete. And traditionally, this program was only for SUNY students that have withdrawn and were in debt. But now the idea is to try to connect with every student that has withdrawn, as well as touch our current students that are scheduled to come back in the fall. So SUNY is trying to adopt a system-wide approach in which it doesn't matter which SUNY institution the student goes to, as long as it's a SUNY. Financial aid staff has remote access to screens necessary to process aid and answer student questions and are answering financial aid at ECC.edu questions remotely, especially in advance of financial aid opening for the Fall 2020 application next week. Staff in the registrar's office are working with students on withdrawal inquiries and are reinforcing how withdrawing at this time could potentially impact completing their education, as well as the financial implications of withdrawing at this point. Staff are preparing themselves for all aspects of fall registration. Students can register online beginning March 30th, and counseling staff are available to help students build their fall schedules. Career Services is offering job readiness and career exploration remotely through WebEx, Purple Breeqcase, and Focus 2. And our athletic coaches and mentors are working electronically with student athletes to help them adjust online and to assist with fall registration. Coaches are recruiting electronically. With regards to our human resource office, HR has worked with the colleges' unions to establish remote guidelines for employees and continued regular communication, often daily, to update and resolve issues and concerns. Human resources and payroll are primarily working remotely, but the office has limited hours from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Staff are there to retrieve mail and scan documents to employees working from home. HR is using Microsoft Teams and WebEx tools to communicate remotely with one another. And most, most of our employees aren't in direct deposit, but for those who are on checks, checks will be mailed to them. Our payroll is available to employees via phone and email. HR is also participating in webinars that provide updates on COVID-19 and its effect on employees. And so they have already disseminated information regarding teledoctors and how to deal with the stress of working remotely. The Equity and Diversity Tal9 Office remains open and is functioning remotely as well. Investigations and interviews will be conducted remotely to ensure that issues are addressed and remedies provided promptly. From our ITS department, the ITS help desk is open 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and is supporting the SUNY Erie community by continuing to answer calls, emails, and processing submitted tickets. So if an issue requires broader help, it is referred to a technician for a callback. And help desk staff are learning by webinar how to use the technologies we are now required to deploy. Technicians essential to operations are available on campus, although in a reduced number, as long as the college remains open. Data regarding user-requested technology and computing equipment is being compiled so we could identify those needing equipment and provide it to as many as possible. And ITS is continually monitoring network bandwidth to maintain optimal connectivity for all users. Just, it's longer than I thought it'd be. But we wanted to give you a comprehensive view to what, what's happening. And I know we've been inundated with questions about the various offices. And with regards to advancement, our advances staff are also working remotely at this point. Weeks ago, I spoke to Elizabeth Bozer, the daughter of Joan Bozer, and she has asked that we postpone the Joan Bozer ATM naming event. We have also canceled the annual scholarship luncheon. Our staff will still work on creative, creative and meaningful ways to virtually recognize our scholars and donors in the absence of the luncheon. Our staff will still work on creative creative and meaningful ways to virtually recognize our scholars and donors in the absence of the luncheon. Our alumni received a check-in email last Friday with a positive message focused on ways to help the college during this time, like donations to the food pantry or the recently created Food Integrity Fund. We have already received contributions, including a generous five hundred dollar gift from a nineteen seventy seven. Last year, the foundation committed fifteen thousand dollars to provide emergency scholarships for students. We are currently working with the foundation to identify the need, given our current situation. And I'll be working with Mike and and the foundation board on potentially increasing that commitment this year. And Chancellor Johnson has asked for an amount for my president's emergency fund so that she can see if she can get support from national foundations. She has been successful with with Dell and HP in getting seven thousand laptops already for us. So I think her her work nationally has been very important in this crisis. And as you know, our nursing students have been removed from their clinicals. The program's focus is on the fifty-two senior nursing students and ensuring that we can get them out and working on time. So the foundation is paying for an online clinical program called Nurse Think, and this is a virtual clinical in which students can manipulate patients in a simulation so that they can fulfill program learning outcomes required for graduation. And the foundation is also paying for a similar online program for respiratory therapy so that the nineteen senior students in in that program can also graduate on time. The Western New York Community College Presidents, so this is Niagara, Genesee, Jamestown, Monroe, Finger Lakes, and Erie. We've met on a regular basis for the past few weeks, and we've discussed collaboration as well as regional issues that affect us all. And probably the most significant one is about commencement. And so each community college has had a different strategy. For instance, Monroe is thinking of postponing until the fall. While we're thinking of a of virtual commencement and possibly on May twentieth. So the idea right now, and this comes from Paula, we we would host a virtual commencement, much like we did for College Day, for for those of you who tuned in last Friday. So I would host a commencement on campus with live and pre-recorded speeches and addresses from the board chair, the county executive, the commencement speaker, and myself. And then we would read the students' names, and we would have the photo of the student online, holding a very cool graduation image that we send them as part of their grad package. So that segment would be pre-recorded, and we would end with congratulatory messages from faculty in regalia, providing pre-recorded messages to students by by department. And then the the students and their families would be encouraged to post messages in the live stream throughout that that ceremony. So that's that's one possibility for us, which is to have a virtual commencement. And I think it's important that we make the distinction between commencement, which is the the ritual, the ceremony, and and graduation, which is, you know, the formal completion of someone's academic coursework. The alter the alternative to a virtual commencement is to postpone to the fall and perhaps have it during homecoming. So maybe after the report, if the board is interested, we might discuss in greater detail what commencement might might look like. So the agreement among the Western New York Community College Presidents is that on April the second, we will send out a joint press release about what we're doing individually for the commencement. Okay, so moving on to student government elections, I've spoken to Albert, our trustee too, about the possibility of of having it virtually this year, which might get more participation than ever because our students would be used to the online and the face-to-face. Obviously, our master planning process has been thrown for a loop, and meetings, including with the county executive, have been postponed. And obviously, the assumptions regarding the physical campus may longer may may no longer be valid. And just as I wrap up my report, I just I want to identify the the silver lining to this awful virus, and I certainly don't want to understate the devastation of COVID-19 by doing so. So I spoke I spoke with my cabinet yesterday about this. I I really think our role as leaders of the colleges to position the college for success, no matter what the environment. So whether distance learning becomes the new normal or the old normal returns, or something in between, which is probably the most likely. So one aspect with regards to the silver lining is that with the economic downturn and the highest jobless claims in more than fifty years, that many people will obviously be looking to upgrade their skills in the areas that we uniquely offer. So we have a unique niche for Western New York in providing job entry programs for this very large and growing population. Now, you've all heard me talk about this fiscal cliff for SUNY Erie for a while now, given our diminishing students and revenue and and our increasing personnel costs. And as trustee still mentioned, we may be at the end of the road in terms of reducing expenses. But in the current crisis, we anticipate getting a big boost in enrollment at some point. You know, in my conversations with the other community college presidents, some are already seeing an uptick in inquiries and applications. Secondly, we've been forced to move more quickly into an area that is distance learning we we always wanted to get into anyways. So we've been working really hard to move into remote modalities for as many programs as as we could we could provide online and to pivot to working adults, people that couldn't come to campus because of their schedules. So this really puts us in a great possession, great position moving forward, as obviously all our programs are in a remote format right now. And again, these are programs in immediate job entry areas. So it bodes well for serving our Western New York community, providing with skills for jobs, addressing what are clearly skills gaps in in Western New York. And I think it also bodes well for our enrollment in the future. The third area of potential opportunity for SUNY Erie is that the residential liberal arts colleges and universities are really going through a tough time right now. Many of them, if not all, may still have to be in remote instruction in the fall semester. So you all know that what's attractive about residential liberal arts experience is for students to be in an intimate, physical, on-campus environment. And if that's not available, students may choose not to enroll in that institution. So for instance, instead of paying fifty thousand dollars to take an online course at Canisius, Damon, or Medai, why not do take the same courses at SUNY Erie for a tenth of the cost and then transfer credits later? As you know, I've I've invested a lot of time in establishing many articulation agreements with the private colleges in Western New York. So that effort might be paying off now. The other benefit for for SUNY Erie and Western New York is is because of COVID-19, there's been a forced culture change. So for for those trustees and community members that remember my very first convocation in August of twenty seventeen, I talked about what might be holding the region back, that there was an understandable fear of change in Western New York, that for three generations, Western New Yorkers with the demise of Big Steel and the Erie County, or sorry, the Erie Canal, change always meant loss of a job, loss of income, or a loss of a home. So there's been a natural fear of change. But this coronavirus has forced us to do things differently, and I think people are are seeing that they can survive. For instance, they could survive online instruction and that there may be benefits to this as well. So this pandemic may have given Western New York and our college a a jumpstart in an openness to new things, innovation, and change. So it it's very much like a push into the water, and we realize that, you know, it's not that bad once you get in. And so the pandemic may be the stimulus that begins a new era for Western New York. On Friday, last Friday, in nineteen oh one, Ark City Campus Building became the post office and federal building. And that building, in which we would be today if not for coronavirus, has lasted a hundred and nineteen years. And it has seen a couple world wars, the depression, as well as the Revolutionary Sixties and the Buffalo Renaissance. And now it's experiencing COVID-19 by us not being in the president's boardroom today. So it has survived, as will SUNY Erie. So I really believe we will weather this storm as we are committed to one another, our students, our state, and our country. And I truly believe we will come out of this stronger than ever. So that's all from the president at this time.
Thanks, Dan, for that very.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Yep.
Well done. We appreciate it.
Len?
Yes.
Tracy is now on online and would like to address the status of the talent talent management now.
At that point, Tracy, you've got the floor.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So I wanted to just add to some of the points that Dan mentioned about our HR team. So we have transitioned successfully to working remotely. I'm meeting with my team twice a week via WebEx, which has turned out to be a wonderful tool for us. The payroll team is is meeting several times a day via WebEx to make sure payroll is processed and there's no concerns there. I am coming in once a day or coming in every day and checking mail and making sure everyone gets their mail. So we are working successfully remotely, which has been a wonderful thing. We are also meeting with the union quite frequently. In fact, tomorrow morning, I have another meeting, we have another meeting with the faculty fed to work on a few issues. So we've been meeting with all four unions on a regular basis to address concerns and issues. On another note, a positive note, I am coordinating a meeting with the Western New York Community College Directors, and that would be GCC, MCC, Jamestown Community College, Finger Lake Community College. So I'm going to be coordinating a call once a week to talk about HR issues and concerns and just to share best practices to see if there is some consistency we can achieve consistency in decisions that we're going to be making as we continue to be in a remote status. And I think that was what I wanted to share, that we are working successfully, and we've been able to answer questions that come across. We've had a few interviews, one for a grant position that was done via WebEx as well. But on the whole, I believe hiring, and we're going to be hiring a football coach, but outside of that, pretty much hiring is is not happening. They are going to be doing a few adjunct interviews via WebEx, and that's primarily to get our job banks filled. So when we do come out of this crisis that we're in, if we need adjuncts, we will have adjuncts that are ready to go. So so those are the things that we've been working on that I wanted to share.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay. Thanks, Tracy. We appreciate it very much. Any questions for Tracy?
No questions for Tracy. Thanks, Tracy. This is Denise, but I do have a question regarding Dan's report when we when we go there.
Okay, all right, I'm finished. I'm going to mute now.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. So, Dan, you mentioned the option of possibly postponing versus the virtual ceremony. And I'm wondering, maybe Albert has heard a little bit from his student body, what the students have requested or suggested or, you know, what have you. There is just something about walking across the stage that really, you know, culminates the the entire process that you've been in. So as a trustee, I'm in favor of postponement until the fall versus the virtual commencement. But I'm just wondering if Albert heard anything from students.
Good morning, everyone. This is Albert. I haven't heard anything from students regarding what to do about commencement. All I know is that they want commencement ceremony. They haven't been, right now, they haven't been told what format it may take, may or may not take place in. So what I can do, what I plan to do, is put some feedback over the next over the next few weeks regarding these two options, and I'll make their 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 feelings known. But speaking of personal experience, you know, the walking across the stage is partially for the student, but most of the time it's actually for, you know, that parent, seeing their student walk, seeing their seeing their son or daughter walk across the stage. I mean, that is something to consider. If personally for me, I want to walk across the stage as well, but, you know, that's just me, my one opinion. But like I said, I'll put some feedback from the student body and get back to you.
Good. Thanks, Albert. I can say that the Western trustee Wilson, that for the Western New York Community College Presidents, we we had this discussion over three weeks, and the concern was that if if you postpone, you may have to postpone multiple times, and and then there is enclosure for students or their families. You know, with the apex of the virus in in New York being somewhere between three weeks and three months, it's hard to tell at what point you could actually have a commencement and the regulations about social distancing, you know, would 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 be diminished. So of of the five or six Western New York community colleges, I think only Monroe is considering postponement postponement completely. The other ones are like Jamestown, they're they're going down the virtual commencement route. So it's it's just something to consider if you if we can't, if we don't know whether a postponed date could be fulfilled, you know, this much in advance, and what, you know, what do we need something for students in the immediate.
Hey, Dan, this is Albert again. I know that, you know, you are, we're put in the box and comes with a COVID-19 crisis, and we know that. So in some cases, all of our wants, quote-unquote, may not be feasible. I do appreciate your efforts regarding this.
Any other thoughts from trustees about commencement? I mean, I think I think trustee Wilson is right. I mean, there is something to, you know, a a physical ceremony where someone walks across the stage. Again, you know, it depends on how much social distancing we would have to maintain. I wonder if we, Monroe, Kate is the interim president there. They have an arena in Rochester that they plan to rent out, and it's large enough to maintain social distance for one student and and two members of that student's family. And so that that's how they're going to do it. Now, we we had the decision by Buff State made for us, meaning that the arena that we typically use is no longer available in May. So, you know, we're
Yeah.
It's our choice.
That makes sense. I and I I would never want to put our student in harm. So be it the fall, be it December, I just think we should make sure we have, or hey, let's, next spring, I just want to make sure we give them their opportunity. That's why I I'm pushing for postponement or both, you know, virtual and the actual ceremony in the fall, or whenever we're allowed, let's say that.
Yeah, I I think that if there's a way to do both, where you have a virtual ceremony for people who are completing and conferring degrees and certificates virtually now and at a at a later time having, you know, a ceremony seems to make sense to me to give people sort of an opportunity to come kind of come together again. I, you know, I don't know if people would do that, but it's it's something to consider.
And maybe just piggybacking, inviting those people who participated virtually this year to next year's commencement so that they'd have the option to do it without us having to go through the expense of doing too.
Right, and you know, I'm sure I'm sure Paula's already thinking about listening to feedback to see what is what is better for the for the student body. I know her.
Trustees, can you hear me? It's Paula.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about the the audio issue before. So the proposal that I put together actually did have us doing both. So part of the thought process behind it was So the proposal that I put together actually did have us doing both. So part of the thought process behind it was that for many of our students, right now, we only we only we only have about twenty-five of five percent of our graduates who actually walk every year now. So, you know, we may lose some of them, especially if they're transferring to a four-year going into the fall. We may lose some of them from a walking perspective if we do it, if we do a ceremony later on. What the whole the whole process was, and Todd kind of hit the nail on the head with this one, is that the idea here is let's do a virtual ceremony on the day that we were supposed to do something originally and then schedule something. Once we get the all clear, to be able to start doing large-scale events again, let's schedule a different ceremony where if the students want to come back and walk, then let's let them do that. And, you know, I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing both of these things for that reason, that they get the recognition that they deserve initially in May, but then also to give them an opportunity to participate in an active ceremony. You know, thought process was if we could do something in the fall and tie it into when we would be doing a homecoming game for the football team, then invite them back that weekend, like do it that week. And then that weekend, they come back for the homecoming game and be honored at the game as our newest alumni.
This is Jeff. Interesting ideas all around. I think I find the least favor with the idea of trying to maintain a socially distant actual graduation on May twentieth. You know, we're educators and we're trying to align ourselves with what the country is trying to do and namely educate everyone about the importance of flattening the curve, extending the impact of this virus so that our healthcare system doesn't get overwhelmed. So I don't want to really be in the business of sending any kind of a mixed signal about that, especially the young folks who have been, you know, fairly or unfairly criticized for not, you know, getting with the need for social distancing. So I don't like the idea of trying to do it in a in a big auditorium and maintain distancing. So that's my first point. The other one would be, I like the virtual idea, and I think I would choose to do the virtual on May twentieth so that they have a degree, can get out into the workforce field that they graduated, and then invite everyone from this year's class to come back to next year's graduation and go through the full-blown robes, everything else that they wouldn't get at the football game, let's say. So that's just how I react to what I've heard.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments at graduation before we move on?
So let let me just summarize what people, what I'm hearing is that and and trustee Stone, we had never considered having having it in an auditorium with social distancing. I mean, that was, that's what Monroe is thinking of doing, but we we've never really considered that as a as a possibility. So but what I'm hearing from trustees is that you want something virtual and then a real physical in-person ceremony with robes and and walking across the stage sometime in in the fall or whenever it's possible in the into the future.
I don't I don't think we can afford to do two graduations in one year. I think we would invite the this year's class to next year's commencement. I mean, let's be honest about our cost.
That's what I that's what I was proposing as well, not a not a full-blown graduation, but getting two classes at once next May.
I see. Okay, okay.
So why don't we take up, you know, we'll continue to have this discussion about this ceremony. We have to see how things, you know, the uncertainty about when we're going to be returning to some sort of sense of normalcy is still very much up in the air. So I think we've had a pretty robust discussion about graduation and we will continue it amongst ourselves and in future meetings. But this point, I'd like to go over, turn it over to Albert, our student trustee, who's been in a, you know, very difficult situation is is our is the student government president interfacing with everyone and trying to get his own, you know, education completed. So Albert, without any further ado, can we turn it over to you?
Thank you, Len, and good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First, I'd like to thank President McCoy and his executive staff for their leadership, efforts, and planning regarding the student year's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thanks for their proactive response. The vast majority of the students' concerns that have been presented to me from the student body have been addressed. I appreciate their discussions, their decisions, and being student-based. I also like to commend senior year's faculty and staff on their efforts to provide high-quality education after converting classes that are traditionally in-class to online format. Over the next month, I'll assist in feedback from the student body regarding online classes and student support services. I do have two questions regarding those. Would it be possible for students to contact their advisors through WebEx regarding registering for classes for next semester and actually put have sort of a face-to-face communication?
Let me ask Doug.
Question for anyone who was able to answer.
Right.
You don't have to answer now, that that's fine, but I just wanted to, you know, get that out there.
This is Colleen Quinn. I could
Oh, let me just say this. Next week on March thirtieth, the online schedule will go live. And remember that effective in the fall, every matriculated SUNY Erie student has a faculty advisor. And so I plan to have a communication out to the faculty, reminding them that the schedule is live, asking them to reach out to their advisor, advisees, and also not just about registering, but also just to check in in terms of their success with the transition to a different modality of instruction and learning. So we want to remind folks, we'll similarly have that communication to students that it's that registration is open and to reach out to their advise advisors. Faculty are maintaining their office hours remotely, and so they're going to be communicating how that access is being is is to be done via email, via forwarded phone numbers. We've all been shown how to forward our office numbers to our home or we're using a computer program called DABR. And Colleen, do you want to speak to how it is for the actual faculty who have to do this? I'll mute myself and turn it over to you.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everyone. Just from the faculty perspective and within the liberal arts, I can speak specifically to what we've been doing, but our dean sent out all of our advisees to all of the faculty. So I have a list of my twenty-five students. And I know I'm not alone in this, but we've all emailed our students so far with our information and hey, we're still around. And as Doug had mentioned, we have virtual office hours. Mine are, for example, from ten until twelve-thirty Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I set up a Zoom chat that anyone can come in, whether they're for my current courses or for students, and we could address them. So a lot of us are doing that and also setting up other appointments throughout the day. I had one at seven o'clock last night with a student to do advisory. So you know, we're all doing what we need to do to for our students.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. And that's the adaptation and, you know, and rolling with the punches that I was talking about earlier. That kind of effort is really appreciated.
Albert, this is Steve Smith here. I just also wanted to chime in here that what, beyond the faculty advising that's been talked about by both Provost Scheit and Colleen here is that we do have the counselors in on all three campuses equipped to work from home. We're working to ensure that the the phone routing systems are in place. One of our primary tasks right now is making sure, of course, that students know who their advisor is. So that means having the welcome center equipped and having ourselves set up to be able to get students in touch with their decanal areas, find out who their advisor is. In addition to that, we are doing WebEx appointments like you suggested. And I put together with the help of Fabio, a WebEx, well, actually Fabio created and handed it to me, a WebEx curriculum that I've had everybody in enrollment management do and have done by the end of the season. So the expectation there is that everybody be able to build a WebEx appointment with a student to be able to share a document and to basically be able to conduct business like they were in person and to do a screen share. So that's been really the the primary focus of my areas this week is making sure that not only are we available and able to to work with students, but that we are able to do so virtually and to accomplish all the tasks that we normally have otherwise.
All right, Steve, thank you for that. What about the high-traffic areas such as financial aid, registrar and Bursar?
Same, same thing's happening in those areas. So every unit within enrollment management's been asked to to do the same thing.
All right, so a student can schedule an appointment with the financial aid office?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good to hear. I know we can register for classes online, so it may take some pressure off them.
If you run into any trouble or if you if you're encountering questions, you know, go through those channels here and let me know. And we're doing, well, with the exception of today because of the board meeting, but we've been doing ten AM enrollment management director webinar or WebExes. We've been meeting for probably on average about an hour and fifteen minutes going over the business of the day, issues that pop up, and how we can tackle those. So just stay in contact if anything's coming to your your agenda.
I understand, but how has the how how have instructions been communicated to the student body?
I'm sorry, what? Can you repeat that?
Sure. How have instructions been communicated to the body, you know, in order to contact eventually?
Yeah, so so those, again, those instructions have been going out in Paula's reports about ways that students can get in contact with us. We are finalizing our email and text communication plan to support registration here in the next day. And with the idea that we're going to start pushing some of this content out this coming Monday, now that we're resuming some degree of normalcy or at least so we can make sure that we're including that as content in there, that those offices are open for business in the ways that they can, ways that they can be reached.
Albert, this is Doug. I just want to point out that if the main number that you would call for any of those functional offices at each campus has been forwarded to a staff member working remotely. And we actually actually had my assistant, Kim Boyer, test those calls on Tuesday so that we're going to test them again today or tomorrow, make sure that, in fact, that's working. So that students don't have to initially, if confused, they can just call the office and it should be picked up by a staff member working remotely. And then we can go from there. So if in doubt, just call the number that you would normally call, including the Welcome Center, Financial Aid, Admissions Counseling. I miss, I always forget one, but it's a different one each time. But all of those enrollment management offices.
All right. Thank you, Doug. If that's been thought of already, I haven't heard this morning, would it be possible to have a like an appointment calendar online where students can register? I do know that, well, you know probably better than I do, during certain times of the year, there's a large influx, you know, in in certain areas, you know, such as areas I mentioned, such as financial aid. Instead of trying to call, getting business signal, being blocked, or having someone have to answer most of the phone calls, maybe it'd be easier to have an online system to where they can register online for an appointment time. Just a thought. If that's been thought of already.
Yeah, we'll we will be ready. Sorry, first dog interruption of the day. It was found to happen, right? So the question, I'm sorry, Albert, I got a little distracted there with my dog attacking my window there. Could you just repeat the last part there for me?
Not a problem and understandable. I'm surprised you haven't mentioned it in the background. I was just saying that if it has been thought of already, is there, is it possible to have an online mechanism where students can register or not register? But find out for times to appointment times for the financial aid office?
That is a good question. That's something we should, you know, I mean, it's there are, there are software packages out there that range anything in in the area of tens of thousands to to do those sorts of things down to free versions. I'm not, I can get some folks looking at that.
This is Mina. We have a solution. Let's talk offline.
Okay, great. Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Our current technology, like Teams and WebEx, have that option. We could work together.
Oh, right. Oh, it's like Booksy or was it the Bookings or whatever that is?
Exactly. So that's what we are recommending for faculty also. Let's, and we can catch up after this.
All right, yeah, that'd be great.
So that I think this is a great recommendation and we have, we have very creatively, this is Mina from ITS, coming up with all kind of solutions at a very rapid pace without acquiring any new technologies doing with what we have. So this is one of them that there is, you know, there is a solution and, but great suggestion.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Albert.
Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Albert?
No, no question.
Thanks so much, Albert. And thanks for everything you're doing to help the students out there. So we'll have a college center report. Colleen Quinn is with us. Hi, Colleen.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Hi, Colleen.
So we met on March tenth and the majority of our meeting was addressing at that point in time, what our plans were for the COVID-19 response. And then and then by the weekend, everything changed. So so we actually, actually by Thursday, usually send out an email every Thursday after the Senate meetings to recap. And everything was so different by the time Thursday came that I just didn't send it out because it was already old news at that point. But we did get our task force together for the student not the student bill of rights, but to update our online bill of rights for all students. But that is obviously on on pause right now. And really, all the Senate stuff that we had coming up is on pause. We were going to postpone our elections, which are just for senators, not the actual Senate leadership team. And we're going to reevaluate after the spring break time period to see where everything is at and to try and do a large meeting. I know Mina had mentioned that we can hold a Senate meeting through WebEx for everyone to attend virtually. So we're going to be looking into those options for the April meeting. But a couple of things I wanted to make sure that I touched upon, we have a COVID-19 task force, and I'm a member of that on the communication piece with Paula Sandy. But those meet, that task force meets every day at eleven o'clock. And, you know, I just want to say that Amy Yoder and Mark Polcetti have been doing an amazing job. They are on calls around the clock with national, state level, county level, all the way across the board, giving us new information, up-to-date information every day. You know, the security and Tracy Gass team has been unbelievable with making sure that the campuses have been safe. And Mark Connors and maintenance and just all of our maintenance people that are coming in and cleaning and disinfecting. And you know, now we have hand sanitizers available, so that's getting distributed and just all the hard work that everybody's been doing. Our distance learning team, we have our instructional designers that are Renee Wooton, Scott Silverman, Mark Craig, and then Pat Ryan and Carl Seibert, their team has been working also around the clock with faculty at the various, through WebEx, to help them get their information online and get everybody ready to roll. So when instruction starts on Monday, everybody's up and ready and running. I know there's been faculty across the all three campuses that have been working together to help, you know, people within their department who've never been online before, get online. So there's been a lot of just working together to make sure that what we have is ready for the students on Monday. And it's been going really well. And then from a shared governance point, when with the decision to change the withdrawal update, to move it back to May first, that was all done within shared governance remotely as well. Dr. Scheid and Andy Sacco, FFCC, and myself have been on those email trans back and forth to make sure that, you know, we're all working together to do what's best for our students. So I just want to thank everybody that's been, you know, that's really in the trenches and you know, what they, everyone coming together to help for us. Students that are, I just saw Denise's question come up about students that have trouble with distance learning. We are working with them. We're asking them to reach out. I know, for example, myself, I I have an online statistics course and then I have seeded statistic courses. So I'm not, I'm changing my seeded course, but it's going to be a little bit more hands-on for them than my online course because they've already been online since January. So I know a lot of So I know a lot of instructors are doing that. A lot of us are utilizing WebEx and other ways to get, you know, big group meetings together. I've been posting extra videos online to help my students. And, you know, we're all in email contact. A lot of us, we had our phone numbers forwarded now to our personal cell phones. And some people that are also using Google Voice to have a Google phone number so students can call us directly from wherever they are. So it's been going, I haven't heard of anything crazy yet. And anytime a faculty member's been run into an issue, we've, you know, they've been reaching out to the appropriate people to try to find a solution. So it's been going well.
Okay, Colleen, is anything else?
That's all I got, unless anyone has any other questions for me.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing, the leadership you're providing. It's very important.
Thanks, Colleen.
Yeah, thanks, Colleen, a lot. You're the best.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
We appreciate everything all of you are doing.
Yes, no, thank you.
Okay, I don't know if there's anybody on the call from the affiliated entities. I know Mike was on earlier from the foundation. I don't know if Sue Holloway is present, but are there any reports from the affiliated entities at all? If not, that's fine. We're already at 11:00.
Glenn usually covers my stuff in his remarks. I provide those notes to him.
Yes. Okay, thanks, Mike. So, Mike, would you want to repeat that? I'm sorry.
All the EVPs in the cabinet give Dan our notes for his president's report. So that's usually where that's covered. Thanks, though.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, is there any, is there any old business?
I just, this is Kate. I just want to point out that in the minutes of our last meeting, we did say that we were going to take up at this meeting the talent management agenda from last week, last month. So I just want to make sure we don't lose track of that for next time.
Okay, that's fine. I know, Kate, you've got to leave at 11:00, so I'm trying to wrap this up before you have to leave us. Kate's on the call. She got knocked off the video.
Yeah, the web.
Kate, thank you for your service today. Is there any new business that we need to discuss? If not, I think, given the situation, you know, the gravity of the situation we're in and the complexity of everything everybody's doing, I think we'll dispense with an executive session today. I know Kate's got to move on anyways, and there's nothing that pressing that we need to cover in executive session.
I think there is one issue we should get, discuss in executive session.
Is this a personal item?
It is important, and it's relevant to where we are now.
Okay, okay, okay. So Kate, you're going to have, you're signing off, right?
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
Take care.
Stay safe and healthy.
And if we could have someone keep, Denise, just keep track of our business that we conduct in the executive session so we can report it out?
No problem.
Okay, given that, everybody who is not going to be participating in the executive session, I think Bob's made arrangements for you to sign off.
Yeah, so it's just the trustees and the president.
With the executive session having ended, I'll move that we adjourn our overall regular meeting.
Wait, is there a second?
Oh, wait. We gotta wait till Rob comes back, guys.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So let's turn to the message to get back on.
Yeah. I texted him.
Okay, we can get back on, so feel free.
Oh, he's there. Okay, great.
So do I hear this stuff again? Having come out of executive session, at which we were discussing personnel, particular personnel matters, we have adjourned executive session and come out, and I am now moving that we adjourn the overall meeting that began at 9:00 a.m. this morning.
Do we have a second?
They need a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much, and we will be in communication with everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.